All right, I'd like to call this May 1st, 2014, Cookeville City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, item one, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any additions or subtractions? Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second. I'll vote.
Four yes votes, five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item two, we have a presentation by Bruce Webster of the Tennessee Division of Forestry for the Tree City and Tree Line Awards. If you'd come—
Yes, sir.
Either one?
Either one.
All right. I like that bow tie.
Good evening. Bruce Webster with the Tennessee Division of Forestry out of Nashville, unit leader for urban and rural forestry resources. I'm here tonight for two special events, two special awards. The Division of Forestry works with the National Arbor Day Foundation in Lincoln, Nebraska, for Tree City USA and Tree Line USA. And tonight, we're going to present the Tree Line USA Award first. I'd like to have Jeff and Tony come up, please, to the side here. We've got to present to them a plaque presented to Cookeville Electric Department, recognition of 10 years of commitment to the Tree Line USA Standards of Excellence. You know, trees in our community are very important, and utility can have a big impact on trees in the community. And by adopting these standards and following them, it's better for the health of the tree, and it makes the trees healthy, and barring severe storms, they last longer, live longer. So on behalf of Division of Forestry and the Arbor Day Foundation, I'm proud to present this plaque for 10 years to the Cookeville Electric Department. And standing back behind Tony and Jeff is some of the tree board members, past and present, that have the Tree Line USA flag that we're also proud to present to Cookeville Electric Department. Congratulations on good care of your trees, keep your trees growing, and they have great benefits to our community. We're proud of the utility department and proud of Cookeville. Thank you. We'll do the Tree City next.
All right, thank you.
Guys bringing up the flag, and I have to say that we appreciate the council supporting the local tree board to get these kinds of things done in the community, to get trees planted, to work to help take care of trees. Without guys like Guy Zimmerman, Douglas Earhart, Marty Foster, and I probably missed a couple back there, Mike back there, without those, without their work and dedication, these kinds of things wouldn't happen. But on behalf, again, of Arbor Day Foundation and the Division of Forestry, very proud to present this year to Cookeville 25 years as a Tree City USA. That's back '89, if my math is right. I was up here in 1990 to present the first one, and I have to say the trees are bigger and better than ever out front. But again, I'm proud to present this to—Mike, your tree board chair, come on up, accept this plaque on behalf of Cookeville.
Thank you.
And of course, also displayed with the, with the plaque is the 25-year flag that Arbor Day Foundation presents to the Tree City USAs. I hope you fly it with pride and the, and keep on plugging away to keep trees and get to 50 years someday. I don't think I'll be here to help you, but you never know. If—I'll be retired, but if you make it to 50 and I'm still alive, I'm coming back. Again, congratulations to Cookeville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Webster? Mr. Webster, I have a question. Do you have—approximately how many Tree Cities are in Tennessee?
Forty.
Forty?
Wow.
Really?
Yep.
Wow.
How many are older than us?
How many are older than you are? Whoa, good question.
Eight to 10?
Okay.
Wow.
We'll call you top 10 for sure.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
All right, great.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up.
Good, Bruce.
Mayor, if I may say something, tree people, tree people, you know, this is fun. And Mr. Webster, you did a, you did a great job of presenting this, and I love your, I love your bow tie. I need, I want to know your tailor, okay? I need to—
Oh, I made it.
Okay. But, but as a council member, we all sit up here, and we try to figure, we try to figure out ways to entice business and sports, sports teams and conventions and things here. And one of the things that makes a big difference is how you present yourselves. And, and those trees, all the trees we have around here that are big and beautiful, that you guys take such a command of, makes a huge difference. And I want to thank you guys for making Cookeville, really, really making Cookeville a better place in the stuff you do. So thanks a whole bunch for what, for what you're doing, and please keep it up. I see a lot of gray hairs over here, so you guys are going to have to get some brown hairs real quick, okay?
We can do it.
All right. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to make a few closing comments. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Jim Shipley, Mayor Swallows, and the entire city council for their continued support of the Cookeville Tree Board. A few months ago, I attended a Urban Forest Council meeting, it was statewide, and tree boards from across the state were represented there. And two of the most persistent problems that seemed to arise all day long was first, lack of financial support and lack of cooperation with city government. It's so pleasing to know that that's just not a problem in Cookeville, and we thank you. The second problem that persistently came up was the fact that they lacked professional knowledge and expertise to manage the tree cities within their communities. But with folks like Douglas Earhart, Dr. Liz Mullins from Tech, Jeff Fitzpatrick from the Cookeville Electric Department, Marty Foster Horticulturist from Ohio State, and Guy Zimmerman, Division of Forestry, we are so blessed in Cookeville to have that kind of generous knowledge at our disposal. I'd also like to thank the mayor and the city council for their appointment, or their approval of the appointments of our present tree board, Susan Ray, Leslie Sullins, Julia Woodford, and Marydell Summers. They all have brought so much to the tree board. I have been involved for four or five years, and to be honest with you, as chair, it's often very hard to keep up with them. They're an energetic group of people. One of our primary goals, as we started this year, was to better know and understand the department heads in the city of Cookeville, and to establish a much better working relationship with, ship with them. And folks like James Mills, Greg Brown, Rick Woods, Jerry Jackson, and particularly Ken Young, who's made most of our meetings, have made that transition extremely easy, and we would like to thank them for their cooperation, for their help, and particularly for their patience, as we've kind of learned the workings and the sharing of information. We thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Ian, thank you for all, all that you guys do. All right, on to old business. Consider approval of minutes of the council meeting held on April 17th, 2014. Have motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, new business. Item four, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 140403, establishing zoning for the Old Stewart Road annexation area, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, this is the location of the property, the annexation property that we'll be establishing zoning for, and the recommended zoning is CI, commercial-industrial mixed use. This area, again, extends off, from the southwest of the city, off of Old Stewart Road, Minnet Creek, and Bennett Roads. If you remember, this is an area that we adopted a resolution calling for a referendum on, the referendum scheduled for next Tuesday. As part of that referendum, we adopted a plan of services. The plan of service specified that we would adopt an ordinance establishing zoning for this area CI, commercial-industrial mixed use, that will become effective upon the effective date of the annexation. The recommendation, again, is for CI, commercial-industrial mixed use, has been approved by the planning commission, and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council? All vote?
I think I have. On this parcel, has somebody made contribution to the farmers on the real estate at this time?
Made contribution to the farmers?
Well, to the where they have been paid, anything, prior to the approval.
Has anyone been paid for their land?
Yes.
At this time?
Yes.
No.
Core drillings have already taken place, correct?
I believe so. I don't know.
There has been some environmental work.
Been some work out there, yes. Been a lot of work out there.
And the power has been transferred to the city, correct?
No.
No. No, sir.
Are the power lines installed yet?
No, the area is within the Upper Cumberland Electric Service Area.
Yeah, it's not in the—
You have to talk to Upper Cumberland to see if they've done any work. I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
It's within Upper Cumberland's electric service area.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Vote, please. Vote again? Please. I've already voted. Five yes votes, motion carries. Thank you.
I think they got 10 votes.
Yeah, got 10 votes.
Out of five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 140404,
closure and abandonment of a portion of Holly Avenue and declaring it a surplus, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, this is the location of the portion of the right-of-way that is being considered for closure and abandonment and declaration of surplus. It consists of the last 25 feet of undeveloped right-of-way of Holly Avenue. We estimate the right-of-way, based on a survey, at approximately 30 feet. This request was initiated by one of the contiguous property owners, Mr. Peter Metz. This is an aerial view of it, and Mr. Metz owns this property, and he also owns these two. The original request, based on the survey, was for three different sections of the, of the right-of-way to be closed. The specific standards for closing right-of-ways are specified in Title 16, Chapter 4 of the municipal code, and one of those requirements is that all adjoining property owners have to agree to that. And going through this before the planning commission, it was determined that the only agreement where we could get on all sides was for, for Area 1, and this is where Ms. White did agree to the closure and abandonment of this section, and that's what's before the council tonight. It was reviewed also, as required by the municipal code, by our, by our utility departments, and there are some utility lines that run close to this and possibly within the right-of-way. So the recommendation that was approved by the planning commission is, is for closure and abandonment and declaration of surplus property, Area 1, and let me go back to the original map, subject to the retention of easements 10 feet in width on either side of any existing utility lines, and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Have motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Mills, would you go back to the aerial view, please? Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Now, you may remember, Mr. Metz owns this house right here, and he's in the process of renovating that. And of course, it was a five, it'd been converted to a five-unit apartment, and he's converting it back to a single-family, which fits better with this area, and they need to acquire this area. And again, it's undeveloped right-of-way, there are no structures, and no streets within this, but he needs this area to help do some additions and some improvements to the house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Metz is here, if you have any questions for him.
I have a question, Mr. Mills. What, you said this is Site 1, that obviously there's Site 2. What, what does it take to order to, to—
Well, this, this map depicts the three different areas. The adjoining property owners on, on the other side of the right-of-way would have to agree, and that's not the case as of right now.
Okay.
This was the only section they agreed on?
Okay, maybe, once, once this is turned over, they might agree on Site 2. I've been out there, I've, I've driven that road, ran on that road tons of times, there's nothing out there. So I appreciate people taking it over and developing it and making it, making it nice.
It'll be a big improvement.
Yeah, it'll be an improvement.
All right, any questions? Anything for the audience? Do you know? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item six, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 140405, various amendments to the zoning code, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, this ordinance would adopt several amendments to the zoning code. These are, what we basically consider as housekeeping, for the most part, matters. Over, over the, a year or two, we accumulate different things that we think need to be changed in the code, or we get requests for uses that aren't addressed, so forth. But anyway, this is basically what this ordinance does, and I'll briefly go through or highlight the major changes. We will delete, this ordinance would delete a section of the code that no longer complies with TCA. That's Section 201.8 nonconformities, and it has to do with timeframes for constructing. Of course, TCA now, you have 30 months, so this is no longer applicable. We are proposing several new definitions. Most of these deal with breweries, brew pubs, microbreweries, micro-distilleries. We don't have definitions for these, we don't address these uses currently in the code, so that's why we're adding these. And we're also adding a definition of the type of materials that we would classify as recyclable materials. And again, these definitions aren't included currently. We would also revise the definition of recycling center, and this is done to specify that this is different than a salvage yard. We believe that recycling centers for household products, papers, aluminum cans, those type of things, typical household or domestic recyclables, can be done in other zones than where we just allow salvage yards, which is HM. And that's another change we'll talk about in a minute, but we're proposing to expand into the LM zone for recycling centers. We also would change the definition of outdoor storage, and that's to do with currently, our definition specifies outdoor storage as any unroofed structure is considered outdoor, and there's concerns about sheds with no walls, whether or not that's outdoor storage. This would specify that it is. It must be outside a fully enclosed building. The zones we would add, the brew pubs and the microbreweries, distilleries, wineries, are CBD, CL, CG, CR, and CI. And again, we currently don't address these, and these are the zones, based on what we've seen other cities do, that we think would be appropriate here in Cookeville. We would also add, in the LM and HM, breweries, distilleries, and wineries, the big daddies, the ones that make the full-time breweries, those kind of things. We don't address those now, and if we do, we'd get a proposal for that. We believe these are the zones that would, they'd be most appropriate in. Recycling centers, I talked about that a minute ago, we would ask that we add these in the CI and LM as special acceptance. That means they'd have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals to be approved, but if they met these conditions, one, they cannot be adjacent to any RS, single-family zone, they'd have to, the materials would have to be completed within an enclosed structure, and again, the materials are limited to household materials. We would add, in the CI, LM, and HM, distribution centers, and then we would add, in the LM zone, new and used automobile and truck sales, and we've had some requests for this over the years, and, and reviewing it, we believe it probably would be appropriate to allow those in the, in those, in that zoning district. We currently have a conflict in a couple of our RS districts and our RD district in terms of setbacks off of, for corner lots, lots that have frontages on two sides, and right now, there's a conflict where if, if it's, could be a smaller setback on the same street classification, this clarifies that it's the same setback based on street, street classification. This next change, it has to do with separation of accessory structures. We have a requirement that if you have an accessory structure, like a garage or a storage building, that has to be 10 feet from the principal structure, and that's primarily for, for fire protection reasons, and that's a, this request comes from the codes department. We've had several requests for the metal carports to be closer than 10 feet to the building. Typically, they're put on existing driveways, which touch the house already, or, and to have the carport 10 feet off of that, it just doesn't work. And with, with the unwalled metal carport, we don't believe there's going to be any additional fire hazard, so these would be exempted by this amendment to the code.
Makes sense.
And then the last change has to do with a problem or a conflict with illustration we have, to do with the stacking or queuing length that drive-through facilities. Our current illustration shows, depicts just five spaces, but we have certain uses like banks and restaurants that require more, and this amendment would just, out of note, clarifying that. So these are the recommended changes, and again, they've been approved by the planning commission, and of course, are recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Have motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Questions, comments, council?
I've always been very impressed with, in the time that I've sat at the, on this council, with all of our departments always being proactive, looking forward, you know, looking ahead, and of course, some of this is in compliance with the state, but on the other hand, I just appreciate that all of our departments always seem to be looking forward, so that we are clear with our ordinances and resul, all that, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just have one question, and Mr. Mills, thank you for, sorry, I wasn't at the, at the work sessions, I would have probably got this cleared up when I was there, but, you know, with the recycling centers, just, just a question for clarification, how are those different from the current recycling centers that we have now?
Well—
Like, for example, I go to the one right there, at the Justice Center, and—
This is a different animal.
It's—
That's a drop-off area.
Okay.
These are where you would take the items from the drop-off, you know, these would be private companies that take these materials, package them, and then sell them or take them to distribute to other places. So it's a different use than what you're talking about. These would be indoor, where they collect them.
Okay.
And then, like, again, they package them, put them together, you can't, you can't break them down into something else, it's basically just packets, put them in bulk, and then, then take them to wherever they're sold or reused.
So what I'm, what I'm thinking about is completely, I'm thinking, is, I'm thinking about drop-off centers. You're actually talking about—
No, that's true.
A business.
Enclosed, okay.
Yes.
Okay, because those places, which are, are well-used, and I really appreciate the, we are such a great recycling city. However, they're a little bit unsightly, and they have, they have, they have some cleanup issues sometimes, because it's just tough, it's tough to get, get that material, those materials in and out. But you're saying, what you're saying is this, this is not, this sort of stuff's not going to happen with these centers, because they're, they're more, they're enclosed—
It shouldn't, and again, we require that they be fully enclosed, the materials that are brought in there, but Jeff and I, Mr. Litter from the codes, codes department, we've received several requests over the years to expand this, and, you know, we've, we've gotten, and I think what you've stated brings us about, we are such a proactive recycling community, and now there's a demand for what do you do with those materials?
Right.
And we've got people that want to get involved in that, and we need to expand where they can go, so we can, you know, get the materials out of here and reuse.
And I appreciate that, too, because I just, I was just at the Nashville Country Music Marathon at the expo out there, and there were a couple stations that were exactly what you're talking about. They are taking recyclables, it's kind of a, this green, green industry that's going on right now, trying to take recyclables and produce those into, recycle those materials into different things for, for their private enterprise and making money. And they were asking me about what, what do we have, and I, it just, it just so happens that you guys have addressed this right now, so I appreciate that. That's, I think that's coming in the future, so I, I agree with Alma. Appreciate you guys thinking ahead of this stuff, because I think it's going to hap, it's, it's going to happen.
Again, I want to say thank you to you and your department for being proactive and for, I mean, some of this, some of this is housekeeping, and I understand, that's probably not a whole lot of fun, just going back through a lot of codes and just cleaning them up, but that, it has to be done.
That's right.
So, so often, you hear about governmental entities or bodies that have laws, laws or bylaws that are antiquated or old or whatever, and so just keeps us maybe a little—
We try to keep up to date as best we can. It changes every day.
It does, it does. All right, anything else? No. All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, consider awarding bid for the southeast Cookeville Low Pressure Sewer Project, Water Quality Control Department, sponsors Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have solicited bids on the southeast sewer project recently, and have opened bids. That project consists of, it's the southeast part, part of Cookeville on the map here. Plan of Services, when those were annexed, it was, Plan of Services stated we would try to have sanitary sewer into that area by 2015, and some of the other areas, south of town, is 2027 and 2026. This area consists of, what you're looking at there was the area that was required by the Plan of Services. When we were doing the design, it made sense to grab this other area there. There was a high concentration of older homes that probably had, that needed some sewer service at that location. So we incorporated into that, that into the project. But we have opened those bids now, and let me get back to the bids. Received six bids, the low bidder, JNS Construction Company, $1,199,548 was the low bidder, and we would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
I've asked this before, but you will have a site engineer there at all times, is that correct?
Yes, on this project, we've got a construction engineer, inspector person budgeted in that project, so they will be on site.
And if there's anything that needs to be changed, do they, do they grant approval prior to the changes when they are made?
No, we would have to grant all that approval. There may be field approvals, if it increases contract amounts and everything, that has to come back through us.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Is Alma going to say anything?
Anyway?
I'm—
We're good.
I'm good.
Connie's very kind, I mean, your, her questions are very kind, and I just, we, we, well, supervision is paramount with this, and I appreciate, Mr. Kelly, you're, you're putting a site engineer on there to take, to take care of this, so I appreciate that.
Well, we, we, most, most, every job we ever have, we have an engineer on site.
But I mean, most, most appreciately with this, with this project. Thank you.
Can you, anything else? All vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Kelly? All right, this is the portion of the meeting where we open the floor to hear from citizens and our delegations. We just ask that you come forward, state your name, and keep it to three minutes if Anything from the council?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Please go back to a concern that I have on the blighted neighborhood established by city council, and I'm basically wanting to stop it, period. A question that I have for city council is, what is the clarification of the blighted neighborhood?
What's the definition of it?
I need a straight-up answer.
I don't know a definition of it off the top of my head. It was, I know it's, there's three different areas that were, that were discussed and identified in the 2030 Land Use Plan. That was extensive research that, I was actually on the planning department when we started that, this was over four years ago, and there was three areas of the city that were, that was recognized as being downtrodden, need for improvement, and that may be a combination of crime rate, turnover, and housing, dilapidated homes, codes problems—
I'm going to narrow this down to from Ninth to Broad, from Willa to Chestnut. Let's talk about that grid only. That's where I have properties. That's where I'm concerned about what you think you can do. So, back to a different definition of the word blighted. Could you give me one?
A different definition?
A definition, period. What does it, what does it give you in authority as a city council by calling it blighted? Is there an advantage?
We can call it a different name.
Yeah.
I mean, I, yeah, I don't know if it's necessarily called blighted.
Well, Larry, you called it blighted.
Well, that's, I call it blighted, I call it blighted because it's a word, it's just a word I understand. When it comes to codes, they have their own kind of vernacular that they use, so I understand the word blighted, so that's what I use. That's not, that's probably not the official. I think the official is like the, help me out here, guys, planning commission folks. It was, the mayor is exactly right. There was, those areas were picked out by some really pretty sharp people that looked at, looked at all the demographics and the factors involved in those places, and came up that those places, these places are in serious need of recovery, I guess, and...
Revitalization.
I use the word, I use the word...
Revitalization.
Revital, that's a great word.
That's the word.
That's a great word.
Thank you. There she goes.
I tell you, I tell you what all you need to do is just, I mean, it just, you just kind of need to...
Well, and oftentimes, we are able to tap into funds and also different, different zonings that will help encourage, you know, building, cleaning up, changing, those kind of things.
And that doesn't mean that every particular piece of property in that area needs revitalized.
Right, exactly.
This is just to help the area in general.
Right.
And it gives us, gives us, yes, as a council and a planning commission, a little more freedom to be able to do some of those things.
By calling it a blighted neighborhood, does that mean...
How about areas that need to be revitalized? We'll just start saying that.
Revitalization.
Whatever you want to call it, will that also allow us the ability to take in state or federal funds to accomplish your goals?
We've not, we've not seen any of that, but, I mean, potentially down the road, but I don't know that. I can't answer that question for you. This may be a deeper conversation you need to have with Mr. Mills and the planning department.
Melinda?
Yeah, Melinda.
The other, the other question I would have in this same area is, does a city have the right to condemn a piece of property within that grid from Ninth to Broad, from Willa to Chestnut, to accomplish an RAO within that grid?
Do we have the right to be able to condemn a piece of property?
Yes.
It's extremely complex, and that's, that's too detailed a question, too detailed an answer to give you without more specifics. But the city has the power to condemn property for certain purposes, but the state has restricted that and regulated that significantly. It used to be that, under the U.S. Supreme Court case, what are they called, City of New London case that came down about five or six years ago, all a city had to do was call an area blighted, and they could condemn all the property in it. The Tennessee legislature's responded to that and restricted that so that that doesn't happen in Tennessee, but that's a very, very complex question.
That's a good answer. I mean, I believe that's a good thing for our community, but I wasn't aware of what you shared. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I think, Mr. Boyd, I appreciate, appreciate your questions. One of the things that I appreciate is with this REO, with the REO development districts that we've been able to establish, it gives us some opportunities to change some densities and things like that, which encourage developers to come in there and, which they would not have done prior to. And that, to me, that's a win-win. It's a win, that's a win for the folks that are there. It's also a win for the folks that are trying to develop properties, so...
I have one other comment, and that is, this area has been known to be a blighted neighborhood for years. It goes back to, you know, when David was going out in the codes department and shutting down all kinds of crack houses and everything else. And we have a couple of property owners in the blighted neighborhood that the codes department, in my opinion, neglects. So, by virtue of not forcing codes to some sort of quality, the city's in favor, favors this blighted neighborhood by inaction. And you need to think about that. The L Block is owned by one guy, and he owns almost all the way to Fifth Street on the east side of the road, and nobody's put their foot on it. So, I'm saying, I think we have a blighted neighborhood somewhat because of our own default. And I spoke very strongly at the judicial forum at the courthouse on this matter, because none of you guys, nor me, want these thugs in our neighborhood. But over where I have five houses, they're in my neighborhood where I've been working for 12 years, and I've got a legitimate concern.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. If you have specifics, if you could bring them to the codes department specifically, that would be better, easier to address.
I can drive over there. I don't have to bring anything.
Anything else?
Remind everybody Tuesday is election day, so go, go vote.
Anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.